I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome for the Bourbon County Commission meeting, April 8th. Approval consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes from 4-1. Twenty-four, approval of payroll, and approval of accounts payable.
I second that motion. In discussion, on favor, aye. Public comments?
Please for our approved last week's.
Pete OMB.
Okay. Pete, you have the floor, sir. Make sure the red button is lit up, would you?
Okay. I think it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Last time I was in, you told me to, it was all right to go consult an attorney.
Sure.
So I have consulted an attorney. He specializes in working with local governments and businesses on complex or time-consuming issues that their city or county council does not have time or specific knowledge to handle. This includes the zoning and other land issues. He says the same thing that I know others have stood up here and told you, that home rule gives the commissioners the power to set regulations on solar projects, even without zoning. So I want to talk about a couple of options that you can use to regulate these projects without the unnecessary expense and headache of zoning. First, I'm repeating the request made by another resident last week that you pass a resolution to limit the number of acres in the county that can be devoted to utility-scale solar and wind energy plants. Once that limit is reached, no more solar, no more wind projects. May locate in Bourbon County, that's all it takes, pretty quick, simple, painless, and allows the rural ambience of the county to remain nature rather than industrial. Second, at the least, you could have minimum setback requirements from houses and property boundaries to limit the electromagnetic interference, visual noise, and other quality-of-life issues or concerns for non-participating residents. There are many other options my lawyer told me you guys could pursue. It's not my job to give you guys the information. This is, you guys, you guys can look for the information on all this. The home rule deal gives you guys a lot of power. Whether you believe it or not, it does.
So are you saying that we should sit here and any application we don't like from the county, we should use home rule?
When you get a certain number of people coming in complaining, you maybe should check it out.
That's not what I ask you.
No, I'm not saying you should do that with everything, but once people come, come, once you have complaints voiced, maybe you should pay, you know, you gotta pay attention to your constituents.
Well, we do, we do. We also have to go along the law. Go ahead, continue.
Yeah. I've got a lot of questions on these solar farms. Number one, what's the emergency protocols in place for fires, hail, tornadoes, and who pays for that training? If we have a tornado come through and rip a solar field apart, what are we gonna do? You guys got, you guys got money setback, or is somebody training people? What, what are we gonna do, Gus?
I don't know. You mean if there's bodily harm, or if there's salvageable?
These things, these things burn, number one. Number two, they've got all kinds of heavy metals in them. If they're broke open, the heavy metals leak out. If you get a tornado through them, how far is that gonna scatter it? What are we gonna do? If there's heavy, if there's solar panels laying three miles away, who's gonna go collect them? Who's, who's trained to do that?
We have a Kansas emergency preparedness director in the state of Topeka, or the city of Topeka, that would come in and review anything that would be hazardous.
Okay, so.
At our request, and they're really trained to do so.
Well, are the members of EMS, local fire department and stuff trained to handle all these situations? I'm, I'll give you guys these questions when I'm done. I've got copies. What about any other health risks from the solar fields? You guys got any, here's a, are there any health studies on the solar fields that are third-party, not from the solar companies? You guys got, have you got any of them?
I don't.
Who's responsible to take care of the property value loss, health hazards, known and unknown? You know, guys, they got lead pipes in, in Flint, Michigan. We didn't know anything about it. We had lead paint for years, didn't know anything about it. Is there gonna be a, a commercial ten years from now? If you or any of your family have lived by a solar farm, just call 911 and this lawyer will sue and, and you'll get money from everywhere. What about electromagnetic field hazards? What and how much of the tax value is gonna change on this industrial land? You got, it's industrial land. It's an industrial solar farm.
It's in a ten-year tax abatement. We don't have any control over that. That was passed by Governor Brownback.
Well, that needs.
Now, there is no well in that. That's the law.
Well, planes don't even fly over solar fields. The glare off the, off the solar fields causes planes to, they, they go around them.
That's not true. I'm a pilot, that's not true. But anyway.
So you been flying over solar fields a lot?
No, not lately. There ain't any here in town, Pete.
In an emergency situation, can solar farms let off the toxins or heavy metals? Do you guys know?
I, I would, um, well, number one, I don't know what toxins you're talking about.
Cadmium, zinc oxide.
How many people in here have a cellphone in their pocket?
Everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Same stuff's made, same stuff's in, in your pocket that's self, makes solar panels.
Pete, I give Bo.
So do we, do we outlaw solar?
I've got a two-year-old daughter, a sixteen-year-old daughter, and a thirteen-year-old boy, and, and I'm getting concerned from you, aren't I?
Uh, do you know if Bo called the state? I give him a contact person, Bo Casper.
Yeah, he's called the state. We've called, we've called a lot of people. We've got, we've got wheels in motion in a lot of places.
So KDHE is concerned, they're coming to take a look? Good, good.
Do you want the solar farms bury your homes and children? How much certified bond does each of these solar fields carry in order to do the reclamation on them? I mean, what happens if the, if the solar company just walks away after ten years? Who's gonna tear them down? What's gonna happen? Here's a big question I got. Why do they sneak around and not tell their neighbors about these solar farms?
Ask the property owners.
And ask the neighbor?
Yeah, I asked the neighbor. Believe me, I talked to him. He signed a non-disclosure.
Ask the people.
Why is there a non-disclosure on all this stuff?
Ask the people that signed the documents, only thing I can tell you. I haven't read the documents, so.
What effects is this gonna have on the wildlife? They put a fence up, nothing can pass through. Maybe, maybe a snake and a, and a mosquito. Um, will, will this ground ever grow anything again? I mean, they go through and scrape the whole top of the ground off, for the most part, to level everything out. Uh, and is this all coming from just the current administration's green energy grants? I mean, where's, they're, these guys are, if we don't have those grants, are we gonna have solar panels? Because they're non-sustaining. They don't sustain themselves unless there's a grant. Does it lower any of our energy bills? Are we getting any electricity out of these? How much local tax money is paid from these solar farms? Evidently, nothing for ten years. Are these solar farms owned by American companies or foreign companies? The one that's going in by me is owned, is, comes out of Zug, Switzerland. Uh, do you have any requirements for soil sample testing? I mean, it's per, evidently, there's a, the, we, cadmium and everything is okay. Cadmium, uh, there's a lot of lead in them. There, I, I can't recall right now, but there's a list of heavy metals in these things. Tell us how the solar farms benefit the whole pop, population of Bourbon County. And how many people does a solar farm benefit compared to how many people does it adversely There you go, Gus. I'm not, I'm not trying to be hateful, I mean.
I know you're not, I know you're well enough.
This is, this is a serious issue for me.
I'm going to review what you said as far as the home rule. I don't totally agree with you, but I don't disagree with you because I don't know. I will find out. I will show you that, um, what you're talking about is just a little unfair. You want us to control some things, but not all things.
I don't wanna control, I, I'm not.
Yes, you are. You're asking us not to, not to do solar panels.
I think we should sure enough control an industrial complex coming in, in agricultural area.
As I recommended three years ago, there should be a petition filed with this commission by so many people studying.
How many people?
You'd have to check with a lawyer. I don't know what that number is, but I'm not gonna say. Saying you want on the ballot, special use permit that will regulate commercial industrial in the rural areas of Bourbon County.
Okay.
It, it takes a vote.
Okay.
To get this, and that's basic, is only 101, what that is, special use permit.
Okay. So, so if another one comes up, you guys are gonna sign?
Another what?
Another, another contract on this solar. There's, there's five contracts come, there's four contracts coming up. You've signed one already, south of Uniontown, as I understand it.
We have been involved.
We signed a road use agreement.
Yes.
We didn't sign any contracts with them.
We didn't sign a contract.
We signed a road use agreement. And then a cleanup.
In that road use agreement, does it say that the whole back is 25 foot?
I believe it does.
Yeah. It says they can use.
So it's pretty much a contract.
They say they can use our roads, so. But you know, we got also, Pete, and I, I know you're not being negative by any means, but anything we do, if we were to tell Mr. Smith or Michael that he can't have that, well, a year ago, we signed a deal, as I already mentioned once, saying, you can do whatever you want with your property, and now you're gonna sue me because I'm gonna stop you somehow legally. So, we're in a very, very awkward position here. We've agreed to let you do what you want with your property at the request of the citizens, and we cannot have it both ways.
I understand, but it is, um, I understand some of that. We're gonna continue to pursue this, no matter what. Um, I, we've got a lawyer this, this, he, he's got the deal figured out. He already knows what he's, what's, how to proceed.
Yeah. Well, if there's, if there's a legal avenue, I would think your lawyer in Wichita would provide an injunction on somebody to stop it.
He will. He will. He told me to come to you guys. He told me to keep coming to you guys, that you guys have the opportunity, and if you're, if you're not gonna use your opportunity, it sure looks, it doesn't look good for you.
Well, that's your opinion. That's your opinion.
That's my opinion, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Pete?
That's it.
Thank you for coming in.
I'll give you guys these questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Will be somebody coming next week?
Okay.
That's gonna, they'll give you an opportunity to give a rebuttal on them.
Lord willing, I'll be here.
All right.
Thank you.
Patty.
Patty, you are next.
Quarter cent sales tax.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone of the town hall meeting on Thursday at 6:30 out at the Ellis Center regarding the quarter cent sales tax. If you have any questions or comments about it, that's the time to make them heard. Uh, if you can't make that one, there is another one in Union Town on the 24th at City Hall. Thank you.
I sure hope we have a good turnout, because we have a lot of good questions. It's such an important matter to vote on.
And it'd be nice if one of you guys was there.
You think we should be there?
I think you should.
Well, I, I wondered about that, but I want all the focus on the committee, the volunteer committee. I don't want them asking me questions to the committee, so I, I understand what you're saying. I may have a mind yet, but I want the committee to really get involved and answer questions. We've got an excellent committee there, a lot of medical knowledge, a lot of good business folks there.
We had a pretty good turnout. There was a meeting last week one night, and we had a pretty good turnout on that, so.
Okay, thank you, Patty.
Just wanted to remind you.
All right. Anybody else, Cliff?
David Bearbrier.
David Bearbrier.
Good evening, guys.
How are you, sir?
I just kinda wanna touch a little bit on some of the stuff that, that Pete and them guys have been going over. I'm, I'm just here, you know, kinda as an engaged citizen, friends of these guys, neighbors to these guys, um, you know, maybe not right next door, but, you know, overall, I think everybody that lives here are neighbors. Um, over the last couple of meetings, him and Bo have been here, and they, they've voiced their concerns, um, you know, and I understand, I think that resolution that you guys were referring to about property rights was, uh, 5-22, something like that. I, I haven't been able to find it to actually look at the resolution. Every time I, I look at it, it's, it mentions it, but it don't show what the particulars were on it. But I, I don't oppose landowners doing what they feel is right and best for their families on, on their own property. Uh, I don't even oppose renewable energy, for that matter. Uh, I've been doing a lot of research on it, and, I mean, it's a growing industry. Uh, I think it is fairly new, and we don't really know a lot about what's going on there. You mentioned KDHE to Bo. Have you guys, you guys got that agreement with Hinton? That, the, the agreement with Hinton Industry or Solar? This is the current agreement?
We have a road use agreement. We didn't.
Well, there's four agreements you guys signed. There was a road agreement, there was a decommissioning agreement, there was, uh, I can't remember all of them. There, there was two, two others, one, uh, and, uh, I mean, you guys signed them, and uh, what I looked at, at, in them is, you know, it, it covers a lot of that stuff that, that he, his concerns was about fire, about, it assigns, I think you guys got Eric Bailey with the road part of it, and I think you got Shane Walker with the emergency management part of it. That's what was in the, in those agreements. I just think that, uh, maybe, you know, before we start signing a bunch of others, that we step back and, uh, and take a closer look at some of these safeguards on setbacks and noise and glare. Uh, you know, it seems like this agreement only puts out the minimum standard, 25 feet from the property line. The state, there was a state bill a couple of years ago that died in committee, uh, that I was gonna refer to, and then you brought up about the petition. Uh, you guys can, you guys can make a motion to, to, to make a resolution that would set guidelines for how these things, you know, setbacks and, and all that. It doesn't have to be in particular on, you know, any industry, but just on, you know, because we have wind, we have solar, um, you know, what else is coming down the pike? Maybe, you know, we don't have to do zoning, but we could do a resolution that strengthens what we have negotiating, and it would have to go to a vote. I mean, you don't need us to come in with a petition, but I guess if we, if that's, you know, if you guys don't wanna do it, then I guess that'd probably be our next step. Um, I mean, it's just like, like with the immigration deal, that's just a resolution. Just like with the property rights, you know, for, for, the rights for property owners, that was a resolution as well. Um, you know, the eminent domain that, that, that they brought up a couple of weeks ago too, that's, that actually was state law, that, that Cali County got reinforced on eminent domain, just for their county. I was just learning about that too, myself, on the Department of Legislation for revising, uh, that you guys can, you guys can do that as well. Uh, but I mean, I mean, it's, it, just however you guys, you know, whether you want to make the motion, put it on the ballot, and see what the, what the people of Bourbon County think about this industry, and whether we should proceed further, you know, and then, like that resolution, uh, uh, to, to govern, just, just basically to govern, because, you know, uh, in this new deal, or in this deal that, that currently that you guys signed, there's 27, or it said there was 27 landowners that, that have agreed to lease their property. Um, out of 14,000 people, that's less than 1% that, you know, that, that were, you know, and I don't know what the percent of the people that live next door to them that are worried now about all the, you know, things that they're seeing and hearing about this industry, but I would imagine it's probably pretty close to about the same percent. But it seems like the deal is being made for 1% when, you know, I'm kinda looking at, you know, the whole po, the whole population, how do we all feel about it? If, if, if it's for that, then, then, you know, we drive on, but if it's not, maybe we oughta know. And maybe, you know, because, to me, I mean, when you look at land that is, uh, sometimes fifth generation, and, I mean, I even look back at some of the people on that Pike Reservoir deal, talked about that their family, you know, was the original homesteaders, that's 1800s, uh, and then, you know, now the state or whoever is gonna come in and try to, you know, and it hasn't died in committee yet, it's still in committee, last I looked. Uh, so that means it's still gonna, you know, still a possibility of it, of it happening. Uh, and I think that as a, you know, as a, a county, uh, and as, you know, concerned citizens and commissioners, that maybe we oughta be looking out for the whole, and, you know, maybe our economic plan should be more geared towards what, what we're doing in this county, farming and ranching and, and that type of stuff, rather than bringing in something that we don't know very little about. So, I just, food for thought. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Anyone else, Cliff?
Please. You're up.
Oh, I'm up. Okay, okay. My subject is, let me get up here. My subject's on ER, and I always say that if you're gonna do something, you gotta have skin in the game. And it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or Republican, and I'll tell you, my whole entire family has called our legislators and told them, why hasn't Medicaid been expanded? 68% of them in Kansas say that. We don't, we haven't done a resolution here, and I would say this, and people go, why are you excited about it? Well, Kansas is six billion dollars to other places, New York, Los Angeles, Florida, and so the county wants me to pay a quarter cent when we're sending my taxes off to, this federal tax off to every place else except here. Okay, we open ER here. Guess what President Reagan said about operating an ER? You cannot turn anyone away, even if they can't pay. There you go. And at hospitals, the same way. Well, if they expanded Medicaid, what happens is that pays, and do I have skin in the game? Yeah, I have a skin, and he's, uh, works for a person that doesn't include health insurance. That's fine. But what happens when you do that, there's people out here that's carpenters and mechanics and other people along the way, and they don't get paid top dollar, but yet it allows them to get medical care. And if you don't give kids the medical care and other people medical care, it's gonna cost you more in the long run anyway, because eventually, as a taxpayer and a person that has had insurance in the past, I don't have skin in this game because I'm on Medicare, and I have TRICARE because I spent all my time in the Army. And I'm telling people, they need to call our legislators and get that taken care of. And with the county commissioner's permission, I want to segue in one, one area. And that's in your, uh, it's really your emergency, uh, person, used to be Will Wallace, and I will tell you this much, and I'm not gonna get into Will, wind farms or any of that, but what I will tell you is when they get over their head in this county, they might want to call me. One pin drop of nerve agent will kill you within 15 minutes. And I was involved in a lot of studies on radiation, and there's some biological stuff out there. I might know a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you for the time.
What else, Cliff?
Uh, Robert Harrington, if he's here or not, or?
Robert Harrington. That's Gary. Good evening, Mr. Harrington.
Good evening. All right. First, I want to make it clear that tonight, I'm here as a resident of Bourbon County, a taxpayer of Bourbon County, and someone who is genuinely concerned about some of the misinformation and less than factual statements that have been argued against the opportunities that are currently available to this county. There's been some opposition voiced about the proposed solar farm projects in Bourbon County. However, these solar developments present a tremendous opportunity for a community that should be embraced, not dismissed. Allowing these projects to move forward will bring significant economic benefits while positioning us as a forward-thinking leaders in the adoption of renewable energy, a pivotal shift that is already underway across the nation. From a fiscal standpoint, the numbers clearly illustrate the potential upside. Projections indicate that housing, hosting multiple utility-scale solar farms in Bourbon County could increase our assessed property value by over $400 million. This massive 400-plus million boost to our tax base translates into a potential for an 80% reduction in residential property taxes countywide. That equates to serious tax relief for our hard-working families, seniors on fixed incomes and businesses trying to remain competitive. In a rural county like ours, this cannot be overlooked. Further bolstering the economic case, these solar developers have committed to providing Bourbon County $1 million annually for at least the first 10 years of the operations once the farms are constructed. Actually, it's from the time construction starts. Over that decade, we are talking about $10 million of direct revenue infusion. We could strategically invest in core priorities like rehabilitating our deteriorating road infrastructure, adding more sheriff's deputies to improve public safety, funding economic development initiatives to attract new jobs, and delivering further property tax relief. For a modest, modestly populated county, that is a game-changing level of income we would be hard-pressed to overlook. Some argue that solar farms are an eyesore that spoils the natural beauty of our rural landscape. However, these modern solar installations have a remarkably low physical impact compared to many other forms of energy production. The panels are raised just eight to 10 feet off the ground, allowing the existing vegetation to remain underneath and neighboring farmland to continue operations. Their visual, their visual footprint and land use is minimal relative to something like a coal mine, fossil fuel power plant, or wind farm. Properly sited solar farms can quite easily blend into the surrounding environment. Moreover, we cannot afford to ignore the broader need and momentum to diversify our energy portfolio by embracing renewable sources like solar and wind. The reality is that our electrical grid, regionally and nationally, is already strained due to increasing demand from population growth and economic development. Forecasts only show that demand intensifying rapidly in the coming years as transportation and industrial sectors electrify more activities and operations. If we fail to invest in scaling up renewable generation like solar to complement traditional power sources, we will inevitably face worsening energy shortages, higher and more volatile electricity prices, and greater vulnerability from an overreliance on any single energy source. Respected conservative leaders have recognized this need and economic opportunity as well. In Wyoming, a Republican-led state government has actively welcomed new wind and solar installations in recent years as part of an "all of the above" energy strategy aimed at strengthening grid reliability and resiliency while maintaining affordable electricity prices. Wyoming understands the economic and national security risk of, of being overly dependent on any one energy source when supplies are globally constricted. They have embraced utility-scale renewables as complementary resources to their fossil fuel industry, rather than being ideologically opposed. Here in Kansas, we find ourselves with a unique opportunity to be on the leading edge of renewable energy adoption in the nation's heartland, diversifying our energy production while reaping the accompanying economic benefits of being an energy supplier. Let us embrace this chance to welcome solar investment, expand and diversify our tax base, generate long-term revenue streams to directly fund community needs, strengthen the grid, provide tax relief, create jobs, and position Bourbon County as a regional leader in solar production. Another important perspective to consider is that the land plan for these solar developments is privately held by owners who should maintain the right to decide how to utilize their own property. We cannot ignore the principles of private property rights that have underpinned America's free-market economy for many multigenerational families, farms in Bourbon County. Leasing portions of their land for solar farm installation represents a legitimate opportunity to keep their agricultural operations viable long-term. The unfortunate reality is that it is becoming increasingly difficult for family farms to rely solely on traditional crop yields or livestock for sufficient income. Children are pursuing other career paths, depleting the future workforce. By hosting solar panel arrays on portions of their property, farmers can cultivate a new value-added revenue stream that augments their agricultural business. Instead of being forced to sell off land acre by acre, solar leases provide family farms an economic lifeline to retain their property and maintain a proud legacy. Their land remains in agricultural use, continuing to contribute to our community's rural character and food supply chain in a sustainable manner. At the same time, the solar installations allow aging farmers to monetize and asset their land in a way that generates stable annual income during retirement years or helps fund succession plans to transition the operation to future generations. It provides diversified revenues, not subject to the same volatility as commodity markets. These sorts of innovative ventures are crucial to revitalizing our agricultural economy and enabling family farms to remain in the operation, in operation for decades to come, rather than slowly bleeding out. By empowering private property owners to make these decisions about their own land, we uphold America's legacy of property rights and preserve a vital rural way of life that many hold dear. The more opportunities we provide our agricultural community to charting their own path forward through to projects like solar, the more we secure America's food supply chain. We should not be in the business of denying farmers profitable avenues. We should not be in the business of denying farmers profitable avenues to ensure their legacies are passed on. These solar farms represent a symbiotic way for agriculture and renewable energy to coexist for the betterment of all. The choice is clear. Our community can either proactively seize this chance to uplift our economy, achieve greater self-reliance and energy security, propel us forward as an energy leader, and be champions of property rights for the small farmer, or we can cling to the fading status quo, remain overly beholden, sorry, overly beholden importers of energy and food, miss massive investments, give away our rights as property owners, stop fighting to protect the family farm, and risk falling even further behind. If we want economic vitality, growth, and sustainability long-term, welcoming these solar farms is a prudent decision for Bourbon County's future. And I would like to point out again that that's for me because I pay taxes, just like everybody else in this county. And trust me, I moved here from Missouri, and my, my property tax in Missouri for my home was twelve hundred dollars. My property tax for my home here is five thousand. So when somebody, if we can increase the assessed value of this county with projects like the solar farm and therefore give myself a tax break in the means, I open that, I welcome that with open arms. We have to find a way to lower the burden of taxes in this county, and the only way to do it, there's two ways we can do it. One is to decrease, decrease services, layoffs, layoff deputies, stop having an ambulance service, or stop doing roads, stop managing roads, or we can increase revenues. And by increasing revenues, I mean bringing in new projects, new developments, such as new housing, new infrastructure, or, excuse me, new manufacturing and things like the solar and wind farms. And that increased revenue will then allow us to decrease the rates that we're all paying as taxpayers in this county. So I appreciate your time, commissioners, and if you guys have any questions for me, I can answer them. If not, I will...
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
We don't get into that back and forth because it's, it's not, it don't work out.
I wasn't.
I was.
I was.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a meeting next week.
Okay, that it, Clifton?
Yep.
Public comment. Okay, next on agenda, C-CAP. You have the floor, sir.
I'm Casey Brown, community engagement coordinator for C-CAP. Last week, you guys got a presentation from Jamie Whitney, our CEO, and Scott, our transportation director, with a request for some funds to support the general...
What's that, Michael? Sorry, sir. Oh, he can't.
Sorry. I'm not used to a mic. I'm usually very loud mouth. Last week, you guys had a visit from my CEO and transportation director. They made a request for three thousand dollars to help support the ongoing operations of the general transportation services throughout the county. We are still looking for the remaining sources for that and have some lines and have been invited to write for some things, but we're trying to shore it up. They sent me up to follow up to see if you guys had any questions or wanted some additional information.
Clifton?
No, I don't, I don't...
I don't have any more questions. I appreciate you coming back.
Okay. Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve three thousand dollars for the request for funding for C-CAP to provide transportation to those in need in Bourbon County.
Yeah. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? I will say this is one of the most, I mean, that's a great program, so thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry if you have to drive clear up there.
You're good.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Susan Walker, CFO, please. Good evening. Mr. Clifton.
Do you guys have some questions? And Patty's welcome, I don't know if Patty's here. She's welcome to come in and stand here. We kind of put this together. I spoke with her just to make sure that we were all on the same page, and Jennifer. But I'm just going to kind of read through, because there were some conversations that happened several meetings ago. Unfortunately, our meetings didn't line up so that we could get this response out immediately. But Mr. Hoyt had had some questions about a statement that was made by Ms. Shelton at the Fort Scott Community College about funds not being allocated appropriately. So that was the first thing. The second thing was a third ARPA payment that apparently he thought I had stated. And then how the ARPA funds could be used. I'm just going to kind of go through and explain what my position has been here at the county since I was hired two years ago. My primary function has been to review each fund for accuracy and compliance. When I was hired, we had been faced with five years of audits with statutory violations. And as stated before, it was important that the fiscal health of the county and compliance with state and federal laws are critical for favorable bond ratings and grant opportunities. We've talked about that in the past. But our goal for 2022 was to work with the elected officials to develop internal controls. And Patty and Jennifer and I have been working on that all year long. And this was to fix previous audit violations and reconcile cash balances. I worked very closely with the clerk and treasurer. We were able to close out 2022 with only one audit violation. However, the current clerk was not able to remedy the violation because she took office in February of 2023. So that was not something that she could even remedy. However, this year, I know we made sure that we had that violation taken care of, and what it was, was inventory that had to be collected from all the different departments. So, you know, really, that was not something that she could fix, but I'm confident that we got it fixed this year. My main thing is identifying weaknesses in internal controls, errors posting in accounting entries, compliance with federal and state laws, and understanding the county procedures and how each department's job responsibilities affect other departments. And it's important to successfully running the day-to-day operations for our county. In 2023, the clerk, the treasurer, the appraiser, and I worked to continue to strengthen all of our financial processes because all of our departments, they intermingle every day. Some observations that we have or reconciliations had some clerical errors. These errors were from prior audit violations that required hours of work to identify the variances. So it was one of those things where we identified it, we knew it was wrong, but we didn't know the magnitude of it. So we had to really research what was going, going on. And these started almost seven years ago. One of the variances identified was the question that Mr. Hoyt had on the Tribune article. And it was about the tax rule being reconciled. And nobody could really pinpoint what it was. Well, after lots of research, we finally figured out that it was a TIF district that was created, but the TIF district never went all the way through. And so what was happening is there was tax being collected, and it was setting in this TIF fund to help pay down the project. Those money never got distributed. And so they'd just been accumulating every year. And so the accumulation was up to about four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars that we had on that one project. That project was the Price Chopper Building. And we all know that that closed pretty quickly. In this, I've shown where all the distribution that Patty made. She made a special distribution to get these funds out. The college got a portion of it, the county, USD 234 and City of Fort Scott. Those were your big distributions. But one of my main jobs as CFO was to work with the elected officials and staff to bring the county into compliance and establish these uniform financial statements and implement standard financial processes. And so with this, we've learned a lot of things to help with the transparency. And that's what we're doing today, is we're being completely transparent that this was something that was overlooked. It was noted in the audited financials, but I don't know that we really knew what it meant when, when it was being pointed out for those five years. So that was one of the things that I dug into this year. About the ARPA funding, the biggest thing about that is, is I didn't say that we were getting a third distribution. We have all of our distributions. What it was is that there was money set aside for some towers to be put in for the IT. He was willing to forgo some of those funds to kind of help with that police vehicle. However, we didn't end up going that direction. But the question came up was, the police vehicle even a qualified expense? And it is. And the reason why that is, is we are a five, a tier-five county for the ARPA funds. And what does that mean? Is that with a population below two hundred and fifty thousand residents that are allocated less than ten million dollars, we can use those funds as what's called a standard allowance. And that means that we can use it for government services. So that would fall under that auspice that we could purchase a vehicle. I also included, you know, the U.S. Department of Treasury where it talks about that type of funding and the different types of things that we can use for that. The other thing that was brought up is what was, what was some of the funding used for? So I just put together a quick little chart of the money that was kind of set in a contingency fund. There was a hundred and thirty thousand set aside, but it went into a contingency fund for ready. There was ten thousand for the Fair Board, twenty-five thousand eight hundred for the senior citizens, twenty-two thousand eight hundred for area on aging, and then forty thousand for the soil conservation. All those funds, except for the ready funds, to my knowledge, have been released. And so basically, they're back in the budget, the same allocations are being spent for that. The new things that, there was questions on how we were allocating the funds. And the way I understood it was, the sheriff's vehicle was going to be used with that TIF distribution, that special distribution we just used. And the sheriff wages, both allocations and the EMS wages are coming out of the general fund. So I just wanted to clarify those few items so that everyone was on the same page. Because I know we were kind of stumbling around, and I just wanted to make sure that everything was, you understood where we were coming from, so...
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you for responding. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Jennifer?
Are you next? I have one other. One other? Yep. So the NRP, I'm going to ask Jennifer, Patty, if she's here.
I'm here.
Come on in, and Matt. This one's a little bit bigger animal, so let's just set at the table.
This looks serious.
It is.
It is, yeah. It's a headache.
Are you ready?
Just fine.
So one of the other items that, and I know I've, I've sent some communication to the commission about this, but I had a lot of questions about the NRP, the administration part of it, because that fee should be going back into the appraiser's fund for the administration. And so we never could really pinpoint where that money was going. But with that, we uncovered some other things. And I want to just note upfront that this is all prior administration that this, this is the reason why this has happened. We're just here to try and come up with a solution to resolve it. And what you have to understand with the NRP is, it goes, the application goes to the appraiser. And that's, I kind of put this cycle on here so you could see what happens. It goes to the appraiser. He looks at it and determines, based on the values, if it qualifies for the NRP program. Once he reviews it and determines the property, he has a form that he fills out, and that has to go into our system. If that form is incorrect and the values are put in incorrectly, it flows downhill. Everything's messed up from that point on. So the double-check has to be the clerk, because she is the one that sets the abstract. And so what she would have to do is take that application and then ask for proof from the appraiser. And there's a, there's a form that they can print off, and that's how Matt and I have determined a lot of this. There's a form you can print off that shows what their previous value was versus what the new construction's going to be so you can see the difference. And they only get that abatement on the new construction. I'm not misstating anything, right?
Right, no, you're...
Okay. So from his office, it has to go to the clerk's office. So there was a breakdown from that point. There was never any double checks there. From the clerk's office, once she certifies the abstract, and she, she does a preliminary in June that sends out to all the taxing entities, and that's what tells us, hey, you've got an NRP in your area. So if I worked at the city, I would know there was NRPs. If there was a township that was affected, I would know there was an NRP. Once that abstract is set, then, and final abstracts are set in November. And then when it comes to the January distribution, that's when Patty does the NRP. She really, all she does is cut the checks because all this information is flowing through to her. Now, there is a process that we can do to double-check the numbers, but it really is between these two offices is where it starts. So with that being said, if you'll turn to the next page, this sheet right here shows you who was participating by year. And in the year 2018, you can see we have a whole bunch of people. We have the cemeteries, we have townships, we have all the cities participating. In that year, the abstracts were not done correctly. And it's carried through all this time. So basically, people didn't get enough back on their NRP. That's one issue. Another issue is that the base values for the projects were not, were not entered correctly. And so that creates, it could be they were overpaid, it could be that they were underpaid. There were, what, when we set the abstract, those dollars would have sent, been sent to the taxing entities. And so therefore, that money's not there anymore. So if we have to go back and re-figure all these, we're not going to have the money to pay out. So that's the biggest issue. I can go through and do all these calculations, but you have to understand, I have to calculate every single levy, which is this next sheet. By year, you have to go through and, and do a calculation based on every levy that's affected on that taxing, on that person, whoever applied for the NRP. So it, it's very time-consuming to go through and do this. So that's why we haven't come to you with a figure yet, because we, we need to have some idea of how we're going to handle this. There is also some issues with our software. It's not calculating the exemption portion of the school district. So we've got multiple things going on here that need to be addressed. There's no way for us to go back and take money from the taxing entities to pay out these NRPs or pull back the NRP money. So our question for you is, how do you want us to move forward? And you may need a week to, to, to think about it. But more than anything, we're just trying to be completely transparent that this is, this is an issue we know about, and we're going to have to work through it. It's going to take some time. It's not going to be able to done in a week's time because there are, so we have over a hundred NRPs that we would have to look at. You could, because it is, it's an error, you could go to your errors and omissions on your insurance. But again, it's not something that we can just solve. We don't have all this extra cash laying around to give these rebates. And I just, it was important enough to all of us that we felt like we needed to talk about it. I hope I explained that well enough. Matt, is there anything that you want to add?
No, I mean, what you said was correct and what we found, so...
The commercial side of it would probably be your biggest, your biggest cost. And we know, we've already looked at one, and it was a pretty good chunk of change. And when I say that's about ten thousand dollars. So something we can discuss, have a work session over, we can, you can... But we, we need some direction. She went ahead and did her distributions. We fixed a few ones that, that were in the twenty-three applications because we knew we could fix them now and they'd be right going forward. But these past ones are the ones that we need to dig into.
On me personally, I'd like to have a week or so to think about moving forward.
Absolutely.
And I mean, it's obvious, we've got to fix it, so...
Yeah.
The question is how we fix it, so...
So they all, I would assume you would want me to put together, go through and calculate every one of these because they are going to have to be done individually. I'm going to have to look at one, one application at a time to get there.
My opinion, we need to know what our obligations are.
Yeah. 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 And I think it would be hard to take money away from an individual, but I, we just got to, got to figure that out, too.
Yeah, good luck on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So... So.
Possibly you can come back in a week or two with some numbers, maybe three weeks?
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, two or three weeks. It'll probably take me, that'll be all I'm dedicated to doing right now.
This group can come back and give us your opinion as soon as.
Yeah.
Is it currently fixed?
No.
And the software company?
So for 2024, it's going to be messed up also?
For the 23 applications, it'll be fine, but you still have some.
That's what I just asked, is it fixed?
But you still have some from previous years that are.
That's not what I'm talking to, Matt. I'm going forward. The newest ones are being fixed.
Yes, but you're still paying out old ones.
No, I understand that.
So.
So we're paying out this year for the 2023 ones?
Yes. But you pay out the old ones, too.
Right.
So they've been paid out wrong, if they're calculated wrong, or if their valuations are wrong.
My question is, the process is going forward fixed?
Actually, we have, it's probably software.
Right. The software is aware of it, and they are working on it.
So if I sign an NRP, if I sign one up today, which I will be doing in the near future, it will be correct?
Yes.
Going forward?
Here's the process. The process will go to Matt. He will do the calculations. He will send that information to the clerk. She will double-check his information before she does the abstract. And the other thing is, is these warrants, a lot of these townships and cities were never pulled into the abstract. So they never got the rebates on those areas. And so that goes, you know, that goes way back before all of.
So moving forward, do you review the abstracts after she's done them? Where do you come in and play?
Right now, I'm just, if they have a problem, they come to me, and I help calculate it for them.
So if she certifies the abstract, and it's okay, it goes directly to Patty?
Yeah. And Patty sends the payments. Really Patty's just cutting the check. She's not.
It's all figured, but everything they put in, it's figured in the system.
Okay.
You know, when I process it, it tells me checks, you know, the amount of checks.
Now, what I am putting together is a spreadsheet for Matt's office, that they can basically fill in some information, and it calculates it for him, and that can go with the application to Jennifer, so that she can make sure that that's how the taxes are being. And that can go to Patty, too. She could double-check that.
A question from Matt and Jennifer, going forward, do you folks see anything you need to change, need additional help with, or anything?
No, we just need to, you know, in the past, there were some things that were figured wrong, and those affect everything. When you go from what was originally there to what is there now, and it's not figured right, it throws everything off. And it wasn't, like she said, there wasn't a check in the clerk's office saying, hey, this isn't right. So it got screwed up from there. So, you know, it's one of those deals where my office sends it in, if nobody says, wait, this isn't right, or something's not right on it, then we don't know.
Yeah. And we don't know if the clerk didn't receive the, I think she did, because isn't that where you pulled the file from, the agreements? There's MOUs that are done. Those MRUs are the ones that trigger her to put them on the abstract, as they're an NRP participant. So this is where processes are super important. But we have one now.
Right. And this group works well together, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We just need people to realize there are problems. We're working on it. We don't know the amount on everybody's yet, so we'll do any good to call you.
Yeah.
But we will get notification out to everybody when we get it all.
And once we determine the damage, we'll come back and discuss it with you to figure out how to fund it. That'll be the biggest thing.
That's where we get to come in, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Jennifer, you're still up, looks like.
Yeah, my chief's here.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. How's Rob?
Good.
Good.
Okay. So I received a notice of, a public notice to put in my office from KDHE. It is for a water pollution control permit. It is for a reissuance of an NPDES water control permit for an existing facility at Maple Ridge Mobile Home Park. So this is, if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, they can come in. I can get them a copy of this and get them into contact with the appropriate person at the state. So that will be available in my office until May 4th. That's all I have on that. Just throw some information out about the election. Early voting will start on May 6th here at the courthouse. We will get those dates and times posted. We will be offering Saturday election, like we have with the most recent elections. If you are not registered to vote, you need to do so by April 24th. Anybody who wants to receive an advance ballot in the mail, if you're not already signed up for a permanent advance application, we would need your application by April 30th. If you are signed up for advance, you need to do nothing further. You'll get your ballot in the mail, like always. And then, I do have a question on the tracking. Do you want us to track the results by precinct? So that means we're going to, for every ward in Fort Scott, for every township in the county, do you want to know how people are voting? I say, the state mandates this for us for most elections. I just want to see what you want us to do, so we can be prepared.
I know. My opinion, I'm not sure that's important. I said yes or no vote. What do you think, Clifton? I mean.
I mean, I don't know that it matters what county votes.
The results are going to be resolved.
I just want to know, so we can figure how we're going to move forward with all of that.
And what is the actual date?
It is May 14th, so Tuesday, May 14th.
I guess we would know who did MAR. Anyway.
So we, we're going to get that.
No, we don't want Fulton attacking Union Town, or Union Town attacking Fulton.
Yeah, we don't want that.
I understand, just trying to, I guess I get everything figured out. So that's all I have.
Good.
Jennifer, I told the gentleman, and please, everyone listening, this is a joke. This is definitely a joke. A friend of mine said we did an AAR. I said, well, if we get one, don't use it then.
Yeah.
You sound like Sheriff Harp Hyo.
It does, doesn't it? I said it was a joke. Okay. Who's next? Justin Meeks?
Justin is next.
Good evening, Justin.
Good evening, commissioners. Anything about a five-minute executive session for B2? There's possible litigation, litigation. There's some issues that, we have ongoing active litigation on one issue, and then there are potential on another one. So.
Just us two, and you?
Yeah, that's it.
It's, yeah.
Make a motion, go into executive session, KSAD, 75 S4319B2, for consultation with attorney for public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, if for five minutes, we return here at, it looks like, 6:32.
Two commissioners.
Two commissioners and Justin Meeks.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? On favor, aye.
Aye. Yes. Definition of hypocrisy, look it up. It's literally the definition of hypocrisy. And so let me say that one more time. I asked more than one people, person, do you want me, as a commissioner, to tell you what to do with your property? Was a resounding no. But then I asked, but you want me to regulate something on your neighbor's property? Yes. Definition of hypocrisy, look it up. It's literally the definition of hypocrisy. So now, I'm not in favor of solar farms either, but I'm not for zoning, 100% not for zoning. As far as regulations go, we cannot do that. I don't care what one attorney says. The four that I've talked to said no.
County doesn't have home rulings.
No, exactly. It is not a thing. So in my opinion, would the solar company or whatever sue us? Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. But the landowner would have every absolute right to sue us for millions, and we would lose, because we would take away their right to earn income, which you cannot do in the United States. So unless it's illegal.
No, that's Fort Scott, because then you can do whatever you want.
So my point is, I mean, I don't like them either, but it is what it is. And we cannot spot-zone like people say we can. Anyway, there is, and I'm not going to use the right term, there's precedent, is that the right term, precedent available for that across the country? There's lawsuits across the country where there's precedent already been set, which any good attorney would know. So anyway, but that was a long story to say that, you know, hypocrisy knows no bounds in this town, and with some people, not the majority, because I have way more people saying just the opposite of a few, by the way. But I will say, I am absolutely 100% against zoning. It will cost the county a fortune to do it, number one, upwards of half a million dollars, maybe, to put zoning in. That's probably too much. $200,000 plus to enforce zoning in the county. I'm not against it for that reason. I'm against it because my property is my property. And I can tell you right now, there isn't anybody in this county going to tell me what I can and can't do on my own property. That's all I got.
Thank you, Clifton. I agree, I don't support zoning. We've had group after group come in here and say, please, support our wishes, and say you will not do anything to invade property rights of the owners. And we've agreed to that from day one. Again, I do not support zoning either. But you cannot come up here and tell us what you want to pick and choose. What Clifton just said, I don't want you to tell me what I can do, but I want you to tell my neighbor what they can do. Well, sooner or later, you're going to be the neighbor, and then someone's going to tell you what to do, and it's not going to work out very well. This is the United States of America. People have rights on their property. I'm not supporting zoning at all. I understand these people's point. But property rights are property rights, and we're not, we cannot deny someone from raising cattle, making money, or a solar panel, making money on their property. That's their property. God bless America, and that's all I have, so.
Can I ask you a question? Was Senate Bill 481, what he said, didn't go through? Because that gives a lot of the answers to the questions he was asking, as to who's responsible for the discharge and.
I'm not sure, is that the Pike one? I don't know.
No, 481 was all about solar farms.
Okay. I have not read it.
Well, the regulatory, as you know, in the state of Canada, is KDHE. Anything that comes close to, were contamination, they're here.
Well, this Senate bill specified, the owner of the solar panel was responsible for the cleanup.
Yeah.
So if it went through the rest of the process, then we already have loss for that. You don't need to make them up.
Well, I mean, we can even talk about that. Resolutions are not worth the paper they're written on.
No, this isn't a resolution.
No, I'm saying, if we do that, not that. If we do that, a resolution is not, it's just a piece of paper.
It's been sued for reaching out.
I mean, if I can say, if you can't take my word for it, I'm supposed to believe
The other one I'm going to say is, I think you missed the vote on the solar. If they have a problem with it, just go out by Devon on, what is that, Range Road Night? It's right up there. They have a solar thing right next to the same there.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny, nobody's saying a word about the one that's already in town.
Exactly.
Anyway.
I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner.
I'd also like to add one. Patty pointed out, public meeting for the sales tax, April 11th, 6:30 PM at Ellis, out to the college. Please attend, ask question. It's a fine citizens committee, and this is something this commission hasn't discussed yet, but I had the chairman of the commission ask me if I would support, I don't know what, it would be called an oversight committee, going to the future, to making sure that those funds were properly spent on the ER. They would have no regulatory authority or anything, except kind of a little watchdog for future commissioners, because we might not be here, to make sure that that money, and I don't know, we haven't discussed it, I don't know where it's headed, but I want people to trust where that money's going, whatever it takes, because whatever that ballot says, it's the law, so anyway.
He says there'll be another one, 24th, in Union Town.
Yes, that's true. Yep, at 6:30 at City Hall, so.
So I would make a motion that there would be a possibility, possibility that Jim and I might be at that together, well, not together, but at the same meeting. That's a problem, actually, because that's county business that they're talking about. So Justin, can we go to that?
That's good, that's your eye.
You guys can go, but I would, to cover your bases, you probably want to call a I mean, you could do that, but I just think that it would probably be better just to send one delegate and have, you're going to be conducting, potentially conducting county business. And if you get asked one question about how the money is going to get spent, and you answer it, you're going to be violation if you don't call a meeting.
I would be in favor of Clifton going.
So I will, I will, I tell you what. I will tell you what. I will tell you what, I will try to, I don't have a problem with that. I will try to make it, but Patty, you got to make somebody promise that they're not going to ask me any questions.
The committee will be taking all the questions.
I'm kidding.
And that's what we want. We want those commissioners, and I hadn't thought, I thought about going, and I thought about not going, because I don't want those people focusing on kind of commissioner. I want them to focus on that committee.
Yeah, because I'm not, honestly, I'm not going to tell people whether I'm going to support it or not. They probably know which way, but I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to try to influence anybody.
Just to clarify, and actually, in all seriousness, if Commissioner Beth is asked questions, I mean, you could give him authority through a vote, a motion and a vote, to be a representative of the commission. Just, but if not, it would be his opinion only, not on behalf of the commission. I'd like to make that clarified clarification.
I totally understand if you don't come.
It's just, it's just a hassle. But I might go. I mean, I went to that solar deal, so.
I think you're well-versed enough to understand the issue, both of you.
I'll make that motion if you want to represent us. Okay, I make a motion to allow Commissioner Beth to represent the county commissioners at the town hall meeting regarding the ER, April 11th at 6:30 PM at Ellis.
And don't business will be conducted?
We're not going together, so he's just giving.
I'm not going.
But if you're giving him a designation, you're almost saying that he can make a decision.
Yeah, that's true.
I will, roll the motion. Go have fun.
I'll just go as a citizen, that way it's fine. Okay, so April 11th, 6:30, Ellis Fine Arts, Emergency Department meeting with the committee. People have questions, they should attend.
What steps of things down south? Are we still, are you still going for an April groundbreaking down there, or what? For the new facility down south?
Yeah, it's the 16th, I think.
That's a groundbreaking?
Oh, no, I know, I'm talking about the grand opening of the health facility.
No, but I thought you said that they were probably going to break ground in April at the facility down south, that's what they were looking at?
I don't have an update, so.
Last I heard, Garp, whatever his name is, Herman, from the Gilmore Bell, is supposed to be back in town to discuss that.
I thought you'd make a reference to April, the 18th. The behavioral health has the grand opening, is what I was talking about.
Now, I had asked you before, when you thought they would do something with the facility down south, you thought they would possibly break ground in April? That's what I was thinking. I'm aware she's asking that, so I thought I'd bring it to you.
We got our fingers crossed.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion and discussion. All in favor, aye.
Is that a die?
For doing Yukon, it's like the most boring game ever.